Mr. President, the time is now 1:02 PM. And you can call the meeting to order.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Clerk, welcome everybody to this very special meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Monday, July 22, 2024. As the clerk said, it's a little after 1:00, and we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, if you could have Victor, I don't know if Victor is here, but if he's not, I know there's somebody filling in, but could you give us the instructions for public participation?
Of course, thank you. So live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom, please click the Interpretation Globe icon in the Webinar Controls and then select the Spanish language. At this time, I would like my colleague Victor Hernandez to provide these instructions in Spanish.
Thank you, Suki. President Slocum, I am present. Honorable Supervisors, Ms. Rodriguez, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Nimbley, all county staff and members of the public, Victor Hernandez with On Point Language Solutions. Les queremos dejar saber a los miembros del público que las instrucciones para poder participar en lo que es la reunión de hoy se podrán encontrar en el orden del día publicado. Estas instrucciones proporcionan información sobre cómo presentar comentarios por escrito y también cómo participar a través de lo que es la plataforma de Zoom. Se les ofrecerá interpretación indirecta, es decir, simultáneamente, en español de toda esta reunión, y para poder acceder a lo que son los servicios de interpretación indirecta, usted tendrá que hacer clic en lo que es un icono de un globo, es decir, un mundo, y después seleccionar su idioma. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor, you might want to go back to the microphone. I'm going to ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today.
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Supervisor Pine. Thank you, Supervisor Corzo.
Present.
Supervisor Mueller.
Here.
Thank you, Supervisor Canepa. President Slocum.
Here. Very nice. Roll call, please. We just did that. Yeah, sorry. I meant to say public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the public, since this is a special meeting, public comments will be limited to the three items that are on the agenda. So after each item is discussed by the board, I will ask for public comment for each item. So from Chambers and from Zoom. So back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll do, is there a motion to set the agenda?
Make a motion to set the agenda.
I'll second it.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
And President Slocum?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda is set.
Very good. So we'll turn our attentions now to item number one on our agenda, which is Adopt a Resolution Number 080461, calling and providing for an election to submit to the qualified electors of the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council for their approval of ballot measure, reducing the membership of the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council to five members elected at large, and providing the initial election of council members in the reduced membership body. And B, part B of this, requesting that the election of the ballot measure be consolidated with the November 5, 2024 general election. Of course, this is being sponsored this morning by, or this afternoon, by Ray Mueller, Supervisor Mueller.
Thank you, President Slocum, and I appreciate this being agendized. You may all recall at our last meeting, we were asked to go ahead and consider this item during a comment that day. There was some comment that we received requesting us change the number of five elected members to seven, and there was some belief that there was consensus on the PMAC for that change. Since that time period, it's been raised to our office in the county that there actually had been a vote of the PMAC, which was unanimous, setting the number at five, and that at a subsequent PMAC meeting, it became evident that there actually wasn't consensus to change it to seven. For that purpose and reason, we have the item before us today to go ahead and move forward with the original recommendation and set the number of elected members to five.
Any questions here? Suki, any speakers on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one speaker from Chambers, and then we'll take speakers from Zoom. Dr. Patrick Horn.
I'm Dr. Patrick Horn, and I serve on the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council, and I also am a concerned constituent because the council had deliberated on the resolution for five and agreed on it. Then there was a change made, which many people came to the next PMAC meeting and expressed their shock. So I really appreciate the Board of Supervisors bringing this to a special meeting and the cooperation of the County Executive's Office and the staff to remedy the confusion by returning the resolution to the five seats. And so I want to thank you for your prompt attention on that, and I know that there's a lot of support from the community for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No additional speakers from Chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
We have four hands in Zoom, Dan Stedjink, followed by Irma Rodriguez-Mitten. Dan, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Supervisors. Can you hear me today?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. I first found out about this issue when I was sitting in the, listening to the supervisors' meetings last time, and subsequently had an at-length online discussion with Mr. Horn and Mr. Supervisor Mueller regarding this. The original, there was a Brown Act violation in the original meeting. The original vote was never agendized. The actual text was, and I'm going to quote, "District Three Supervisor Ray Mueller will visit to talk about upcoming elections for PMAC seats and other issues of interest." Mr. Horn's suggestion was that there was a Brown Act violation by the two members that came to talk about it at the supervisors' votes, but the Brown Act violation was actually in the original failure to agendize the vote, which resulted in a unanimous vote. Looks like no one filed the notice to cure by July 11, but I would let you know that number one, you're going to have to pay to place this on the ballot. Number two, you're moving from district-wide to at-large elections. You're almost guaranteeing a lawsuit from Shankman and Hughes in LA, which has vigorously attacked these all over California, and I think there's been a $1.5 and a $1.7 million lawsuit on this, particularly with the additional circumstances of this meeting being agendized and listed in public at, I believe, 4:53 PM last Friday, less than 10 business hours before this meeting. You're almost walking into a lawsuit there. You have to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money here. Finally, I would just say, I've spoken at seven different supervisors' meetings. Your clerk is one of the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Again, this is for item number one, regarding the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council. Irma Rodriguez-Mitten, followed by Mark Wallace. Irma, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. This is Irma Rodriguez-Mitten. I'm a resident of Pescadero on Cloverdale Road. I'd like to thank the supervisors for reconsidering this item at this meeting. As I know you are all aware, good governance requires integrity, transparency, and consistency of process. And this is true at all levels of government, but especially so for our small, underserved, and underrepresented communities here on the rural coast. The job of you who govern is to develop sound policies and achieve fair and equitable outcomes for us, the people you govern. A municipal advisory council such as PMAC can play a vital role in creating community trust and advising you on the policies that impact our communities, as long as those advisors are willing to behave with integrity and to conform to the norms and procedures of good governance that are required by law. It is my hope that by finally having PMAC candidates again go through the process of a fair and open elections, we will restore confidence in this advisory body and in good governance in our South Coast. But I cannot underestimate the concern in this community, the concern I have about the violations that occurred to lead us to this discussion today. And I would hope that in the future, the Board of Supervisors enacts more stringent methods and more direct accountability toward those who would violate not only written code, but just the norms of good governance and respectful communications with their communities. My hope is that in the future, we restore these relationships to having respectful community dialogue and come up with sound policies that ensure the thriving future for the South Coast. Thank you.
Thank you, Irma. Mark Wallace, followed by Rob Skinner. Mark, please unmute and begin.
Hi, my name's Mark Wallace. I'm a resident of Pescadero and currently the Chair of the Pescadero Municipal Advisory Council, and I want to begin by thanking the supervisors for coming together today to reconsider this issue. And just to clarify a couple of things about what happened at the June meeting, so Supervisor Mueller was present at that meeting, as was his legislative aide and a representative from County Council's office. And when Supervisor Mueller presented this measure to us, we asked County Council whether it would be within proper procedure for us to take a vote, to see whether we supported this measure. And we read the agenda item to County Council, and County Council let us know that it was fine for us to take that vote at that meeting. And so we proceeded to do that, and that vote was unanimously in support of the measure. I want to clarify that PMAC has no decision-making authority in the matter. Obviously, we're simply an advisory council, but I think all six of the counselors were present and voted in favor of supporting the measure. And so I'm happy that you're reconsidering what happened at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, because I want you to know that we appreciate your support on the coast side and that you can trust what happens at our meetings and that the votes that we take stand. We're not looking to amend anything that happened in our meetings, and I appreciate your action today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Our last hand is Rob Skinner. Rob, please unmute and begin.
Thank you very much. Much hasn't changed since the last time I spoke, but the process to me is really heavy-handed by Ray Mueller, in my opinion, and Patrick, and to some degree, Mark, because it wasn't agendized properly. We never had a real discussion with regard to what it was Ray was proposing at that meeting where we took the vote, and thus the comments made by myself and Taylor Allen and Irma with regard to the process. And I think you need to leave it in the hands of the voters, and PMAC is most certainly capable of monitoring and managing itself, as we've done for many, many years. And as the senior member on the board, I have, you have to believe me when I say it's really difficult getting board members, and we can do the election, which we've done before. I was duly elected to the board, the last person to be duly elected. And there's no problem with doing election this November. I think it's a great idea, but I think you're restricting it too much to five members. The geographic area we cover and the communities we cover is so diverse and so widespread, five people can't do justice for that. It has to be at least seven. It could be nine, but I think seven is an ideal number. So I'm asking you to please leave it alone. Let's go ahead with the ballot the way it is. We won't be in any violation of any issues or policy matters, and I thank you for your time. I think it's important that you listen to what I have to say, because I know of what I speak, and the other members there are very, very new, and I think none of them, well, I know Patrick hasn't been around for a year, I think Mark has, but I'm asking you to leave the ballot as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. No further hands, Mr. President.
Mr. Mueller?
I'd move the item.
Second.
Roll call.
Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Supervisor Canepa? And President Slocum?
Yes.
Item passed as you did.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number two now, which is being sponsored by the County Executive, and it's to adopt a resolution calling and providing for an election to submit to the voters of San Mateo County, a ballot measure pursuant to Article 34 of the California Constitution authorizing public agencies in San Mateo County to annually develop, construct, or acquire housing units for low-income persons, including for families, seniors, people with disabilities, and veterans in the unincorporated and incorporated areas of San Mateo County, up to collectively 1% of the total housing units existing in San Mateo County, with any unused units carrying over for use in subsequent years. And part B is to request that an election be consolidated with the November 5, 2024 general election. Mr. Callagie.
Thank you, President Slocum, members of the board. Really appreciate this opportunity to talk about this very, very important measure that we hope to have the board put on the ballot. And really, this ballot measure is all about affordable housing for the thousands of people that have been priced out of housing in this county. We only need to look at some of the statistics in this county to just show how staggering this problem is. The median-priced house in this county is well over $2 million. In fact, the Daily Journal reported it at $2.4 million. Entire generation of people who had hoped to one day own a house in this county, it's just, it's just not realistic, the way things are right now. The median-priced rental unit for a two-bedroom rental unit in this county, $3,500. That's the median price, $3,500. When you talk about who this is impacting, we look at our teachers that start off around $50,000, $50,000 to $60,000. They fall in that very low income category. But countywide, for our, and even considering everything this board has done for our workers, and most recently, providing a livable wage of $30 an hour. In the county, we have office specialists, fiscal specialists, food service inspectors, medical office assistants, patient service assistants, dental assistants, accessory recorder technician, benefits analyst, community workers who can't afford to live here in the county that they've dedicated themselves as a public servant. We currently have 11,405 people on our households, on our waiting list for vouchers. Over 11,400 people waiting for a voucher to live in an affordable unit. As I indicated, the cost of a rental unit in this county would necessitate you earning $10,650 a month. That's 3.7 times the minimum wage. You would have to earn $61.44 an hour for some of those, for some of those minimum-wage jobs, and we see some of these jobs in retail sales at $21 an hour, and medical assistance at $28 an hour. It's just, it's just not sustainable. In a 2022 Bay Area Council poll, 57% of the population agreed that the number-one issue facing the county is affordable housing, and they indicated that they agreed that they would support affordable housing. The most important problem in the Bay Area is homelessness, at 31%, followed by the housing cost availability, at 24%. So residents are acutely aware of this issue in San Mateo County. I truly believe the economic vitality of this county will depend on us having enough units available in this county for our service worker, our county's employees that want to live in this county, want to live in the place where they work. But think about, and I know people say, well, look, I go in and I support them by shopping at our local market, buying at our local coffee houses, but that's not enough. We've got to ask ourselves, where are all these people who stock those shelves and check us out and get our coffee, where are they going to live? Because at some point in time, it is just not, it's not going to be viable for them to live in the Bay Area. And we've seen, and I'm sure we've all heard stories of businesses closing because they can't attract enough employees who are willing to come here or sit in that traffic, living across the bridge, and come here and with the gas prices and the toll fares that they pay. It's just not sustainable. Certainly, we have an opportunity to do something and put this on the ballot, this provision on the ballot. And the nice thing is that governments, if this was passed, have the ability to build affordable housing faster than nonprofits even. And this has been done certainly in the County of Sacramento and Humboldt, and then most recently, in South San Francisco. So this is not a new concept. This, and this measure that we're proposing applies not only to the county but cities, to districts, school districts, who can put affordable housing up, building teacher housing. It applies to special authorities and agencies and other subdivisions of public bodies. And it's reasonable in that it sets a limit. Unlike other provisions out there, this sets a limit on how many that could be built and then carried over for the following years, so we could be banking those units and move them forward swiftly. And of course, this provision would apply to affordable housing, including families and seniors and persons with disabilities and vets, and all those other folks that I talked about who work in our service industries that provide such a vital service to this county, yet are priced out of the market. So for all these reasons, I'm asking the board to give this serious consideration. And I just want to make clear that some people might conflate this with the issue in Millbrae with the La Quinta. This has nothing to do with that. This has really to do with affordable housing countywide. We believe, and we've always believed, that in Millbrae, that we fall under the provision of Home Key, and we've taken that track and we still support that track. But this allows for affordable housing to be built by government agencies such as Heart and others, who do such a great job and are so dedicated to providing affordable housing. And I think that it resonates with most people in this county, is they look at their own kids. And I wonder, having four adults who have good-paying jobs, well, three do, the other one's still in school, but they have no ability to own a house here, to own a part of the American dream. And I often wonder where that's going to lead them, if it's going to lead them out of the county or to other areas of the country where affordability is much better. So given that, you know, I've even looked at the Bay Area Government's A-Bag, determined that countywide, including cities and unincorporated area of the county, the housing need from 2023 to 2031 is as follows, and that's 12,000, 12,000 housing units for very low-income folks, 7,000 housing units for low-income persons, and 7,900 housing units for moderate-income folks. So we're talking over 25,000 housing units that are needed within a relatively short period of time to just sustain those who serve us in the service industries and on the lower-income bracket. You know, the look into the future can sometimes be a scary thing, because it takes us out of our comfort zone. We know the world around us is changing, and we know that San Mateo County is changing, and we have to change with it in order to meet the threats. The goal here is really to provide affordable housing to a growing group that has no opportunity to live here. We need to do everything that we can to level the playing field, and though this will not be the silver bullet that solves any of those problems, it is very much a tool in our chest that we'd be able to use in a very good start to try and to level the playing field for those who just simply can't afford to live here. With that, I'm happy to take any questions on this measure, how it operates, or certainly we have our county attorney here, who did such a great job drafting this, and he's here to answer any legal aspects you may have about this proposed ballot measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Callagie, questions from the board? We'll start down to my left. Supervisor Pine, any thoughts?
I had some technical questions for Mr. Callagie and Mr. Nimbley. Could you talk a little bit more about the bank that's proposed to be set up? And who would be charged, who would be in charge of allocating or prioritizing the distribution of the bank? How would the logistics of that work?
Yeah, I think that would really start with housing, and we would work with the cities to determine, and with all the other government entities to determine who was building housing and what the priority would be. A lot of these really are prioritized on shovel-ready, who's next up, who's got the funding to do it. And certainly, it would be an equitable process worked out with all the entities involved, but I envision housing doing that unless you have something else to add.
No, Mr. Callagie. And Supervisor, yeah, I think that it's a question that probably warrants a specific statement, maybe in the materials that we have here, maybe a specific statement, that the County Executive would work in consultation with the city managers and other appropriate stakeholders to develop appropriate processes for allocation, words to that effect.
Okay. Different question. How would this measure work in light of actions that individual cities may take or have taken? The city of South San Francisco has already created a bank.
Sure, sure.
And I understand that the city of Millbrae may be bringing a measure to the voters.
This measure would, if adopted, operate independent of those, of those actions, which is to say, for example, that the city of South San Francisco's bank would not be displaced by the county's bank. It would be an additional authority that would be available to localities if they chose to avail themselves of it. But those are separate and independent banks and actions. So again, the city of South San Francisco could draw from its own bank if it chose to, you know, come to the County Executive or come to the county with a desire to use the bank that's authorized by this measure. If it were adopted, it would be able to do that as well. The county's bank would, assuming this measure again was to pass, this bank would be, again, available in the city of Millbrae, for example, if that were determined, regardless of, you know, what might happen with respect to the city's measure.
So if the city were to vote the measure down, that they would still be subject to the larger tab?
This bank would still be available. Yes.
Okay. Could you talk a little bit about the board, you know, should this pass today and goes to the ballot, about the board's role and thereafter?
Thank you. There's a, as you, as you know, from long experience, there's a lot of state law that sort of stands in v. mat and the government code, et cetera, that speaks to, you know, broadly speaking, the prohibition on using government resources to support or frankly oppose candidates or ballot measures that are, that are on the ballot. You know, we'd have to look probably closely at any particular, you know, proposed action by employees or elected officials for that matter. The law, broadly speaking, allows for informational efforts, unbiased informational measures that don't sort of spill into advocacy. On the other hand, you know, elected members of the Board of Supervisors got First Amendment rights as well to advocate for matters, and so we'd have to, again, look at those matters closely. But the overall guidance is that we don't, can't use county resources, and that would include county staff time, you know, county email systems, things like that, for advocacy in favor or in opposition to measures.
Could you describe a little bit, Mr. Callagie, the outreach that's occurred in terms of bringing this matter to the attention of the cities and to community groups?
Yeah, so this was kind of a last-minute type of measure. So I did, once we were tweaking the language, I think we had a week to really, from start to finish, to really try to put this together and... truly try to put this together. And certainly apologize that and would have loved for more time. But I did on Friday send a message to all the city managers, letting them know that we'd bring in this forward and gave them the context of the, the question for the ballot. And I also told them that we were still, probably would be tweaking it over the weekend. And I, I think that, that did occur. I've had a correspondence with one city manager. I did, I did notify a couple of city managers that I was just meeting with on a regular basis, just a couple of days before that and said we were considering this. But I didn't really have the specifics at that time.
So we don't have a good sense for, we don't have a sense for where the individual cities stand?
I, I don't, in particular.
Okay. That's my questions for now.
Thank you. Mr. Canepa?
Great. Thank, thank you very much. Mr. Callagie, could you talk a little bit about, you know, we, we've taken great pride in sort of reach, trying to reach functional zero. Can you talk about what the county has invested in the last five years around affordable housing and then provide us an update to where we are on functional zero?
Yeah, I think that on the affordable housing, we, we have done a fairly good job of creating a pipeline, but it's just that we're not able to keep up, given the amount of people that are asking for vouchers right now. Over 11,000 people asking for vouchers. We spend probably $100 million a year on housing related issues countywide. And it really is incumbent upon the entire county, not just a county entity, to, to really work on that issue. It's not like it's designated as a mandate to the county, but this board has taken a very strong stance on that. We have made inroads on the, on the homelessness population, given the hotels that we have purchased. We have, I think the last time I checked on the Bay side, we had 15 people on the waiting list. We had 50 on the coast side, and we had about 50 families. And, and that's the area that we just seem to not be able to get caught up on, the families, seniors. We've got a growing senior population. And just to, to illustrate that, 50% of the people that we have at the navigation center now are 55 and older. I am stunned every time I go out there to see the amount of people on walkers and in wheelchairs who are homeless. And many of them certainly just outlived their savings and, and found themselves without a place to reside in the county that they've worked or raised their families in. So I, I wish I could be more specific in it, but that's just kind of the general macro view of, of where we're at.
And I know that we had the, you know, the ambitious goal to reach, I think, functional zero. I think it was either this year or the next year. Even though we've made these investments in, in housing, and I think, and you know, you had said, I think, a month ago in a county issued press release, you had said about reaching this number of $300 million in investment, and that, that's coupled with cities. We still haven't reached functional zero. And the reason I tell the public that is there is a lot of housing that's being built. We've partnered in my district, we partnered with the Veterans Village. There's housing that's being built in my district and other districts. So the issue about the housing, I don't want people to get the wrong impression, and I think you'd agree with me, Mr. Callagie. I see your head nodding.
Oh, yeah. I think you guys have done a great job. I think this board's done a great job in really focusing on housing. There's almost an insatiable appetite for it in this county, just given the cost, just given the cost of housing in this county.
Great. You know, I had the opportunity to look at other counties and that are moving or have moved forward in this. There are a couple of things that I'm worried about. And let me speak to a couple of them. I'm really concerned on the legal side about this particular item going before the, the ballot and potentially probably being challenged. The issue I have is around, South San Francisco has moved forward. We now have in the Daily Journal, this issue around Millbrae moving forward with their own ballot measure. I've been reached out, reached out to by several city managers outside, outside of both those cities that are really concerned because they don't have resources in the city. Their main issue on the legality of this matter is how we're moving forward in a different manner. And the different manner is it incorporates, and I'd like Mr. Niblin to answer this, we're incorporating the unincorporated county as well as the county in its totality. The county of Sacramento has passed a resolution from each city within their county to support this measure. And I guess where, you know, I need clarification is, Mr. Niblin, is what we're putting forth today legal? And get your opinion on that.
Supervisor, bottom line upfront is we do believe it's, it's legal. It's, it is true that a number of different jurisdictions have moved forward in various different ways. You referenced the 2022 election in Sacramento County where there was a countywide election. And it is true also that the cities in Sacramento County in 2022 assented to that countywide election. There weren't separate elections, to be very clear, though. There weren't separate elections in every city within the county. There was, in fact, just a countywide election. We, you know, took a look at this as a, as a team here in the county attorney's office, and we see that there's case law, some of it dating back quite a ways, 40, 50 years, where the Court of Appeal frankly gave the, the okay to a countywide election that included both incorporated and unincorporated areas within the scope of the election. That was a case called Pet N-P-E-D-E-N. Again, the Court of Appeal validated that process. I think it was done in Kings County, Kings County.
What was the year of that court case, if you mind? Can you remind me?
I'm just going to need a second to find it. It looks like the election in question took place in 1980. So it was Kern County, I believe. So I'll have to go back and confirm that, but it's, it's, it's several years old, you know, 40 or more years old that we're talking about at this point. And then the, the California Attorney General, back in 1983, issued a decision that, again, we believe provides us with the authority to undertake an election at the county level that includes both incorporated and unincorporated areas. So relying again on, on Attorney General opinion out of volume 66 of the AG opinions, again, for the year 1983, it looks like. So we've looked at it carefully. Now, it is fair to say that there's no case law that's specifically on, on point here. There's no decision that has looked at the exact circumstance of, for example, having competing measures on, on the ballot. And so I will say in candor that we are not able to point to any specific case that deals with that specific circumstance, but we're comfortable that the law, as it exists out there, supports the direction we're going.
Great. And just for the public's general knowledge, can you speak to Judge Feynman's ruling? And that's, that's public, public notice.
Sure.
Can you, can you just sort of outline Judge Feynman's ruling? And if we take this action today, what does that mean moving forward in the Millbrae case?
At the, at the highest level, I guess what I would say is that the judge in that case dismissed the city's action against the county and found that there was nothing that was, I'm just going to paraphrase frankly at this point, just for the general conversation we're having, found that the matter wasn't really ripe, that there was not a project that was properly at issue at this time. I don't believe at this juncture, the taking of the action that you all are contemplating today has any impact on the judge's decision. Again, the judge found that the matter was not ripe for adjudication at this time and dismissed the city's case. Now, if the measure were to pass, it is true that there would, by virtue of the passing of that measure, be created a bank of something over 2,500, I can't remember, 2,800 units that would be available. And it's certainly possible that those units would be available for any number of projects in the county, including in theory, a project in Millbrae.
And a question on Judge Feynman's rulings, and if you can, if you could speak to some of them. There were, there was this issue that she threw out. Maybe you can, you could speak to it a little bit, a little bit more. What were some of the issues that Judge Feynman threw out in her ruling?
Some of the issues she threw out. Again, I think primarily, as I noted, the primary issue was whether or not this was a matter that was appropriate to be adjudicated at the particular time that the matter was brought to the judge, and she found that it wasn't. So I would think that the other issues would really be more in the nature of dicta.
Can you speak, speak more to Article 34? I think the judge used the word ripening. If you could speak to that.
Ripening, I, you know.
The case, the case was not.
Right, was not ready.
Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I think at, again, at a high level, the, the notion was that there was not yet a project, partly because, you know, the county had not been allocated Home Key funding. And, you know, I do have one of my colleagues here, Brian Coolidge. I don't know if, if there's anything.
Would you mind, would you mind coming up?
Anything additional that you want to say about the judge's decision or can?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Brian Coolidge, from the county attorney's office. And, and I have really nothing further to add, Supervisor Canepa. The case, Judge Feynman's decision was focused squarely on the issue of ripeness. And she dismissed the city's lawsuit on the basis that it was not yet ripe because she found there was not yet a project that qualified.
Sorry, I didn't hear that?
Was not yet a project that qualified under Article 34.
But this project, you know, according to the, to the units, moving forward would apply.
Which project are you?
Talking about the La Quinta.
The La Quinta project. I mean, again, if there was an actual, the, the, the taking of this action today would not qualify as a project under Article 34. If, if that's, if that's, if that's the point of the question, then I don't think that the calling for.
So that, so that's really important. And so what you're saying is with the action taken today and the passage of the measure, what you're saying on record, I want to make sure, because we're on record here.
I know that.
That this would not be applicable for the La Quinta. Is that correct?
I'm not su, I want to break that apart, make sure I'm understanding the, the question. The calling for an election, an Article 34 election, frankly, the creation of a bank as is proposed here today, that's not a project within the, in and of itself, within the.
It's not a specific.
It's not a specific project. That is true. I don't know that I would agree that if this measure were to pass, we would be taking the position that you, and I hate to speak in a double negative, we're not saying if this measure were to pass, that these units would be unavailable for a project like the La Quinta project, for example. If this measure were to pass, these would be, there'd be a bank of units that would be available for various projects in the county, including the La Quinta project.
Okay. So you, you, and so when you say bank, we're talking bank of projects, not specific projects, but La Quinta or La Quinta, excuse me, would fall within that?
Yeah, we're to create, we're talking about a bank of units. I guess that's how I would put it. A bank of units that would be available for any number of projects, potential projects, including La Quinta.
That's clear.
If I may, Supervisor Canepa, and that's assuming that the La Quinta would still be available at, at that point in time. We have no idea. It's really, I don't think we can even opine on that at this point in time to determine whether that would still be available or not.
Great. You know, my, my other question is around SFO, PUC, and other unincorporated, not another, other incorporators, other, within this, you know, this resolution before us, we're talking about entities, public entities. So what does that mean in terms of entities outside of unincorporated, unincorporated areas, towns and cities? Can you speak to, because the PUC, my understanding is the largest landowner in the, the county of San Mateo. How would that work?
So, good question. So it's a question of whether or not the, the PUC as a public body would have the ability to avail itself of the, of the unit bank under, that would be created pursuant to this, to this measure. So if the PUC wanted to develop on its property affordable housing, is that, is that the question?
Correct.
That's a good question. I think that the way state public body or the way we're defining public agency within the meaning of the measure, it would be the same as the term state public body in Article 34. So I think it would incorporate, to your point, an agency, well, the state of California, for example, or the state PUC, or the, or the, I guess, you're talking about SF PUC, I guess, as well in theory.
I'm concerned.
Noted.
And let me tell you why. I'm concerned about our watershed areas. I'm concerned about open space, which the PUC has jurisdiction on. So I'm not saying it could happen, but it could possibly happen. If you look at Crystal Springs, if you look at these other areas, the word public entities is really something that concerns me. Because now we're going to be giving, you know, we fought for so much open space over the years, fought for so much open space. I don't know what the inventory is for the PUC. I know it sort of here and there. What does it mean for, for, for SFO? What does it mean for, what does it mean for these other, these other entities? And so I really think that, and I don't know, John, if you can get an answer before now and the time we kind of figure this out up here, but I'd really like to know the answer before we vote on this item, if it's, if it's possible. Because to me, that is really a, a game changer and what the PUC owns. I mean, it's, they're the largest property owner from Redwood City all the way down to, to, to Daly City.
Supervisor Canepa, just so I can maybe try to allay some of those fears. I, I do believe you're right. I think they are the largest property owner, but most of that is right of way for utilities. And certainly those are, you know, believe me, we've tried to build over some of those utilities, parks and so on, and they have been highly, highly resistant to any efforts and have told us that that is not possible, that they need access to that. But, but you're right, it's just given the, the right of way of the utilities and where they run, they are a large property owner.
And Supervisor, if I might just add one, one other point, I think it's important to, to raise, and that is that the Article 34 authorization that would be sort of granted by way of this measure, it doesn't sort of speak to any other legal requirements that might apply, including, for example, SEQA requirements, including zoning, including general plan, including any number of other things that may ultimately bear on the development of projects. SEQA, again, or things that you might find in the, in, in codes relating to natural resources or, or, or public utilities or things like that. So I think that's an important thing to bear in mind as well. You wouldn't be jumping or checking all those things off the block. This is merely the Article 34 piece of the requirements that might, that might bear. So I, I wanted to note that.
You know, there's, you know, I think about the law, and then I think about the intent of the PUC, right? You, you know, you, you made it very clear that they may not want to develop on the site. But what I'm concerned with the language that's presented before us today, that they could. And there are a lot of properties that the PUC has that isn't all infrastructure based, right? It isn't, it isn't all underground. There is some. There is some, and we've had issues with that in the past. But I really think strong consideration and really understanding, when we say public entities, we're talking about the airport as well. We're talking about PUC.
I do, I think you do bring up a really good point, Supervisor, and I think that we could probably maybe fix that. And Mr. Niblin, so the county entity, the housing authority ostensibly would, would hold the authority of how they're allocated or work with those in allocating the numbers. I, I think we could simply, you know, add a sentence in there to indicate that they would be viable projects within the scope of what we're trying within the scope of what we're trying to accomplish here in the county. We could add some kind of language in there to, to address that very simply.
We, we, we could. And I guess the other thing, one more thing I'll note, just so we're comprehensive on it, is that, you know, the, the, the Public Utilities Commission, the state, et cetera, they have the authority they have in any event, separate and distinct from Article 34. Article 34 only speaks very narrowly to, you know, the possibility that they might want to develop affordable housing. If they want to develop anything else and they've got the authority to do it, this vote makes no difference in that regard. They have the power to do that sitting here today.
Great. No, thank you. And I, I really appreciate staff's flexibility. Now, maybe through, through Mike or through John, are you familiar with the state measure that was going to be presented and enacted by Senator Weiner and Senator Allen?
Generally. Yes.
Okay. Can you just kind of speak to the, speak to what your knowledge is on, on the measure and sort of their decision to, to withdraw it?
Yeah, I think it was a, it was a statewide ballot to basically dispense with Article 34 statewide. They, as I understand it, in speaking with Senator Allen's office, withdrew it because of a crowded ballot. And I certainly think that there's probably political reasons behind, behind that also that, that are, that weren't really articulated. Maybe there was feeling that there wasn't statewide support. I don't know. I mean, I think the barrier is kind of unique, as opposed to Bakersfield and some of the areas in the Central Valley where housing is more plentiful and, and certainly affordable. So I think, you know, it's, I could certainly opine that they needed to do more work outside the Bay Area to try to generate the support that would be near, near, necessary to carry out a statewide ballot measure. But, you know, then again, I go back to the Bay Area polling that shows that, you know, at least on the minds of the Bay Area residents, affordability is at the top of their priority list.
Got it. And so, you know, I, I, I want to just sort of get clarity on this. How did you come to the decision that you were going to advance this a week before? I found out about this on Friday. What, was it because the ballot measure, help me understand your thinking on the staff level, why you decided to bring this to us on a, on a Friday?
Yeah, sure, supervisor. And again, I apologize for the late notice on this. We were working on some legal research on this and, and really trying to draft this in a meaningful way. But I think it was Thursday night rather than Friday, but it was Thursday night, but not, not, not splitting hairs here. And I think that, you know, we had to do some, some own, some of our own reflection internally to see if this was something that should be brought to the board. And I think there was an opportunity with a, a, a large election coming that prevented a good opportunity for, for this county to weigh in on a very, very important issue. And, and I just want to reiterate that I think this issue is important statewide, but even more important to San Mateo County, which is one of the highest cost of living locations in the entire country. Certainly Santa Clara and San Francisco have their issues too, but nowhere is it less affordable than, than San Mateo County. So that was the reason it was really kind of a, a late thought and a process that we had to go through to try to, to try to validate it and look at all the legal ramifications and draft the language and all those type of things before we moved it forward.
Got it. And, you know, how do you address and alleviate the concerns of the 20 cities? There are some, a couple who, you know, you know, there, there's different, there's difference of opinions on this, right? I think there's one, there's South San Francisco, but you know, I've been reached out to, to various council members and, and city managers who are concerned about the process because they feel as if on a communication level that they weren't included. They feel that this was rushed. They feel that, their words, not my words, that this is being imposed on them, that there was no communication and collaboration. My understanding is that in April, we, we have, you know, the resolution that, that Hart took in action. Now Hart is, doesn't represent all of the counties. Hart is, it's, I believe it's a 10 to 11 member board. What was before them in a resolution is, is, is sort of, you know, distinctly different than it is today. My, my question to you is, how do you alleviate these concerns that the cities and towns say? And I was a, I go back on this, I mean, I was a council member. And the last thing that I wanted to have, and sort of like the county, we don't sort of like the state. We're fighting the vehicle license fee. We don't like the county imposing their will, right? We like the ability to make decisions because we really have direct representation on land use. How do you address the lack of, or, and you could push back, the lack of communication or the over-communication with the county, with the cities on this matter?
Yeah, no, I appreciate, I really appreciate the question. I think if you look at the history of, of the county, especially over the term, the last six years and even beyond that, we have generated incredible goodwill and collaboration with the cities. This board has sponsored many countywide programs and you are usually the leaders of this county where other cities look to you and, and emulate your actions at a letter date, once you've taken them. That has been the history of the county and that is, we have been great partners. And I value every city in this county in, in what they do and, and how they partner with us. Again, you know, I, I do apologize. I wish there was more time. I wish that we had thought about this, you know, months ago and, and had that opportunity. But desperate times do sometimes call for desperate measures. And I think that we are in those desperate times and that we do have to take action and be leaders. And this board has never shied away from being leaders and doing bold, and in your words, supervisor Canada, audacious things. And, and you guys have really done some incredible things throughout the tenure of this board and boards in the past also. So I, I, you know, well, I'm certainly committed to working with the cities to find a formula that I don't, I don't see how this adversely impacts them in any way. And I've given this a great deal of thought. I think it only enhances their ability to create housing. And everyone, as you know, has had the housing element imposed upon them. We all have RENA numbers to reach. This reaches a lot of those RENA numbers with the ability of government entities to build affordable housing in, in a more expedited way than private builders certainly, or nonprofits. So I'm committed to working with those cities and making sure that, that we are, we continue to be great partners. And in fact, you know, we've got a, a project hopefully on the horizon with the City of San Carlos on Walnut Street, which you guys, you know, so you guys purchased. With that vision of affordable housing and, and potentially for the, one of the first times workforce housing, you know, governments teaming together to create workforce affordable housing units is something that we really have to explore in the future. But I am committed to making that happen.
No, and I, I think you bring up some incredible points. I think we do have a history, great history of collaboration and, and, and working together. To me, on this particular issue, what I would have liked us to, to do is to really, and, and I think Sacramento County has, has got it right, is to have passed a resolution to work with the cities beforehand, not to wait to the fourth quarter with one second left and to put a measure before them. And I do think this lack of communication amongst, there's 20 cities, I believe, in, in us, this lack of communication really hurts us in how we move forward on this issue and other issues. I think it appears, their words, not my words, it appears that we're being heavy-handed. And I know this is the question time, so I'll save my comments for later. But I remember I've served on the, the Daly City Council for eight years and we dealt, we dealt with the state removing redevelopment. And that was a very, very contentious issue. And I just would have hoped, and maybe there's still a chance today, that we can include cities in this process beforehand and not after we make this decision. Thank you, Mr. President.
I do appreciate it. If I could just follow up with one more thing. I mean, the, the great thing about it is we are really putting it in the hands of their constituents to make the decision.
When is the ADA's day before the election?
August 9th, I believe. 8th, Rodden. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Thank you. Let me warn you, I'm going to ask many questions and take, take up a, a good amount of time right now. So my first question, John, can you please just summarize one more time? What other counties and cities have passed similar resolutions based on you and your team's research?
Yes, supervisor. I'll go back, I guess, to, I want to go back to 1998. I believe the county of Santa Clara had a measure on the ballot, Measure 8, I think it was. And that called, it was a measure that passed and it was an Article 34 vote that pertained to, again, a county measure that pertained to county, just municipalities within the county and urban service areas within the county. So it wasn't quite countywide because there were probably some unincorporated areas that were not covered by that. But it was a measure that dealt with both cities and unincorporated areas. There was a measure, again, maybe I'll, I'll jump around a little bit, in 2022, the city of South San Francisco, again, recently adopted a, a measure that authorized low rent housing projects under Article 34. Similarly, in 2022, there was a measure in Sacramento County that.
What year was that?
It was 2022, I believe. It was the, two years ago. An election that, again, was for Article 34 authorization, created a bank that was relevant to both the incorporated and unincorporated areas. And then there was the county of Humboldt, I believe it was. And that may have been back in 2020. It was, but not, not ancient history by any stretch. And that was a, a vote that dealt with the unincorporated area. And so those are some that we've looked at and, and studied over the course of the last many days to look for sort of best, best thoughts, best practices and try to incorporate that into what we put before you.
Thank you. My next question is, can either one of you please describe a little bit more how this, you know, this is on the ballot and it passes, how it would help our county in terms of flexibility and making progress towards functional zero, towards addressing our affordable housing crisis?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in first. Thank you, Mr. Niblin. I mean, all housing is good housing, but really the need is at the affordability level. And this is something that, I mean, Article 34 is from an era, an era that I don't think that any of us could be proud of. And I think for what it stands for is something that is part of California's dark history. This corrects a wrong in our California constitution, at least for San Mateo County. And we've, we've always been a leader in that respect and, and given us the flexibility. And, and, and I don't think it's anywhere more important than San Mateo County, given the, the necessity that we have and the, and the, the need that we have for affordable housing for just the service industry. And like I said, for me, I am extremely worried about the economic vitality of this county moving forward with our service workers. Where are they going to live? Are we going to be a drive-by county where people just say, nope, not there, it's just too, just too hard to live there? I'm not going to work there because it's too hard to get to with the traffic and I can't live there. There's a lot of choices out there. And that is something that we've given great thought about. And that's why this board, I think, has done such an incredible job of really promoting affordable housing and setting up the pipeline for affordable housing and being on the forefront, taking the bold step on an intractable issue that we didn't create, none of you created it, but you're bold enough to step up and solve it, try to solve it. And that's those that are unhoused and those who can't afford to live in this county. And you all have done great, great work doing that. You've been the leaders in the state. You look at the navigation center, everyone that goes out there and looks at it, every assembly member, everyone else, says that this needs to be the state model. And what you all do is really having an impact, not only in this county, but Sam, but throughout the state of California. So the necessity in my mind is there, every tool that we can get to utilize to build affordable housing fast is something I strongly believe that we should utilize.
Thank you. County attorney, this is more for you. Would you say that if this measure is placed on the ballot, would it better enable the county and other public agencies to acquire existing affordable housing that otherwise would be converted to market rate? Yeah.
Supervisor, it would definitely remove potential impediments to that, yeah. I, I think it would improve the flexibility, the agility that government agencies were frankly working in, you know, sort of concert with other stakeholders, including nonprofit agencies and whatnot. Would definitely increase the ability to, and to move quickly, I guess, is the other piece.
Okay, I have a couple for you. So a couple more questions. Would it improve our ability to acquire existing market rate homes and then convert them into affordable or middle income homes?
Again, I think it would certainly improve our ability, because again, it would improve our ability to move quickly in those kinds of circumstances.
Thank you. Would it also improve our ability to engage in land banking and maximize land use? Existing land use, which by the way, we can't circumvent land use laws with this measure, correct?
Two things, yeah, agreed. Whatever existing, you know, binding land use authorities that, that exist out there would remain in place, including the California Environmental Quality Act and other things that might apply. But I, I do agree with the proposition that if this measure were to pass, it would create for government agencies more, more flexibility and more ability to be agile and, and move quickly in those kinds of circumstances you're describing.
Thank you. And would it allow us to become a public developer and directly purchase affordable housing without having to wait on state funding or other sources of funding?
I, I think it would, I, I guess I'm trying to, would it allow us to become a public developer? We would be able to acquire or build in, in ways that we would not be able to currently with, with absence of Article 34 vote. Yes.
Thank you. And then, okay, those are kind of my questions, but I wanted to make some other points really quickly. So I wanted to kind of speak to the urgency, and I think this has been talked about a little bit. But one of the questions that one of my colleagues had was about the timing and why now? To my knowledge, the, the state movement to repeal Article 34, the decision to not move forward with placing that on the ballot was in June. Is that correct? Like end of June?
I'm sorry, supervisor, I need that question again. I was distracted.
Yes, it's a.
I believe you're right.
Yeah, I don't need, I don't need the exact date, but that happened end of June. This board this year made a decision to not have any meetings. That's why we are in a special meeting right now, because this is not one of our general meetings. So we were not supposed to have a meeting this month. And our next meeting is happening, happening August 13th, correct?
That's true.
Yes. So if we did not discuss this now, and also based on the ability of our entire board to actually come together, when many of us are taking trips out of town and taking this month to get some rest and respite, that is all kind of part of what led to us being here right now at this meeting, discussing this at the moment. But I, I also wanted to note that the Hart board, we've talked, I've. But I also wanted to note that the Hart board, we've talked, I've heard Hart kind of thrown in here a couple times, and I wanted to just make sure everyone's aware. The Hart board has representatives, council members from the following cities. The city of Burlingame, the city of Redwood City, obviously the county, the city of Daly City, the city of Pacifica, the city of South San Francisco, the city of Milbrae, the city of Foster City, the city of San Carlos, and the city of Half Moon Bay. In addition to other community members and representatives from the county. So, it's more, it's closer to about twenty folks on that board. And let me count how many cities that is.
Eleven.
Eleven, thank you. And the Hart board unanimously passed a resolution opposing Article 34 and supporting the repeal of Article 34. And I'm gonna read it because I think it's important. And I also want to note that council members who are part of Hart have conversations about their council's ability to purchase affordable housing, to tackle affordable housing. And Hart specifically also, you know, has invested a lot of time and resources into figuring out how not to just build housing, but to purchase housing and maintain its natural affordability in our community as part of a preservation method. And that is widely supported by all of the council members on that board. So, let me read this real quick. Resolved by Hart that whereas Article 34 of the California State Constitution enacted in 1950 imposes restrictions on public housing and development that perpetuate housing segregation and exacerbate the affordable housing crisis, and whereas Article 34 requires local voter approval for the development, construction, or acquisition of low-rent housing projects funded by local, state, or federal resources creating barriers to the development and preservation of much-needed affordable housing and perpetuating discriminatory practices, and whereas Article 34 disproportionately affects marginalized communities hindering efforts to address systemic inequities and perpetuating socioeconomic disparities, and whereas the current housing crisis in California demands urgent action to remove barriers to affordable housing development and promote inclusive communities, and whereas repealing Article 34 would allow for more efficient and equitable development and preservation of affordable housing, enabling local governments to address the housing needs of all residents. Therefore, be it resolved by the board that Hart hereby opposes Article 34 of the California State Constitution and calls for its repeal to promote equitable access to affordable housing throughout the state, actively supports efforts to educate the public about the detrimental effects of Article 34, and advocates for legislative and initiatives aimed at its repeal. And a copy of this resolution shall be transmitted to the California State Legislature, the governor of California, and other relevant stakeholders to demonstrate Hart's commitment to promoting fair and accessible housing policies. So, I read that to make the point that the discussion about Article 34 and its impact in our community is not a new one. This was passed at the end of May before the decision to not, for the ballot measure for the state, to not be placed on the state ballot was made. And it's a conversation that has been had all throughout our county for months and months. So, I wanted to really clarify that this is not something that is out of the blue. This has been an ongoing, you know, concern in our community by our elected representatives all over our county. In addition to that, I wanted to talk about functional zero, because I heard Supervisor Canepa kind of bring that up, and I want to recognize that county executive, I think we kind of have made your job a little harder in terms of getting to functional zero. And I think our board needs to be accountable for that, and maybe not even our entire board, but, you know, myself and Supervisor Canepa raised concerns in the past about broadening the definition of who qualified for, you know, housing priority through our shelter network, through all of our different supports. And we advocated for that definition of who qualified to be more broad and for the residency requirement to be more flexible. And that increased our numbers and took us a little further away from functional zero. So, I think that we need to be really transparent about how that happened and, you know, recognize that we can continue to have conversations about that. It is important, but I don't think it's responsible or fair to not be honest about how kind of we got to that place. It's still something that we need to discuss and tackle as a board, and I hope that we do that in the coming months. I also wanted to just clarify that this resolution before us, if placed on the ballot and if passed, does not circumvent state law. State agencies can already build housing on their property regardless of Article 34. They're already exempt from it. One thing that I think is really interesting about this, actually, let me say something. Let me ask you a question. County Attorney Niblin, how is this language different than Sacramento, for example? Because it says public agencies, it doesn't list them all.
That is true.
Who does it include that other counties don't include?
We include here, you know, a couple of things that, for example, as you know, this is countywide, we incorporate all, basically all agencies that are otherwise subject to Article 34, so that may be a broader piece than is included in the Sacramento measure. So, but, you know, the language is, I think our language is more fulsome, but I think in its spirit, you know, putting aside for that one thing that I've noted, I think it covers a lot of the same, a lot of the same ground.
But it includes school districts, right? Which that one doesn't.
It would. It would. We incorporate, you know, sort of the broad definition of state public body. We don't use that same term, but the term that we use in our measure essentially is, means the same thing as state public body, is that term is used in Article 34. So, that means the state or any city, city and county, county, district, authority, agency, or any other subdivision or public body of the state. You know, we talked for, we've mentioned Hart a number of times. My legal perspective is that Hart is an agency, for example, that would be incorporated within the terms of this ballot measure if it were to pass.
Thank you. So, yes, so it includes Hart Special Vehicle, which is actually different from Hart and had to be that way. And it would also include school districts, which I'm sure, like, for us as supervisors who have had conversations with our elected colleagues who are on school boards, nearly every single school district in this county is having conversations about affordable housing. And Article 34 adds complexities to those conversations and prevents many different school districts from having the courage to move forward with that, with what is necessary for investing in the education of the kids in this community. And so, my last point is this one, and I will also have other things to say during actual discussion. But my last point is that the way that we got here and the timing of this was not something heavy-handed or, you know, or a secret. This is something, when there is crisis, we have to move swiftly with the urgency that those crises deserve and require. And we have an election coming up that is gonna be a really important election, and I don't want to see us continue to kick the can down the road for, we don't even know how many years. I have also heard from many people in this community, including elected officials from city councils, who are appreciative of the flexibility that this would provide even to them on their councils for their cities. And so I think that we can trust the voters in this community to make this decision. There will be other things on the ballot in the state, in different cities. Different cities are running their own land use or affordable housing measures, propositions, measures, actually. And so, I don't see this as an imposition. I see this as providing our community with a decision, and, you know, the voters will Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to start off by saying to all my colleagues and to professional staff, I respect the discussion that's taking place. I've learned from every piece of what everyone's had to say. I actually, as I look at this, I think I'm just gonna move to discussion. I apologize, President Slocum, but I don't have a lot of questions. I do want to share with how I'd like to go forward so people can think about that as we take public comment to give everybody a chance. Warren, you indicated, you asked a question about timing. I actually think a little bit more time, might we have it? Time's a cage we're creating here, so I'd be willing to come back on August 7th. I actually, in the interim time period, to satisfy the concerns that I've heard from a couple of my colleagues, I see a letter requesting a letter of support, opposition, or no position from the cities. And then if it's possible, and I don't know if we're allowed to, so I guess it is a question, are we allowed to poll?
Matter's not on the ballot, yeah. I think you're entitled to poll, and I would note that it's not uncommon for these measures to come to the board with some polling data.
Actually, would like polling data because I had a concern that I've expressed, that if this were to fail, what the backlash might be in terms of our ability to go forward and do housing projects, affordable housing projects in the county. And then I have issues that I just share with my colleagues about the construction of the ballot measure itself. So, at the outset, I want to say to my colleagues, I really don't object to asking voters how they feel about building affordable housing in compliance with Article 34. Article 34 sets that as something that you're supposed to do. I don't have a problem asking them that. I do hear, and I think it's fair, that we include the cities in that discussion, but I think we still have time to do that. Looking at the ballot measure itself, there are some changes I would make to it. Number one, at the outset, I would want to get rid of the language or edit the language from an amount up to 1% of total housing units in San Mateo County. I think that puts an unfair burden on the voter in the polling, in the voter booth to try to figure out what that is. So, I would just change that to 2,900 housing units in San Mateo County. Secondly, I'm confused about where, I think where the current language is about raising local taxes is a little confusing. I would change, because I think it might make people think you're not gonna raise taxes to do the housing, to actually do the housing projects, and a jurisdiction might. So, I would put, and I think what it's supposed to be saying is a measure, that this measure doesn't raise local taxes. So, I would change that language to, shall a measure that does not increase local taxes be approved in order to show that it's this measure that's not raising taxes? Supervisor Canepa, I didn't catch it, but I actually, the issue you raised about the PUC is one that I think's very interesting. So, I would just change the definition of local agencies. And I would say, we're asking whether or not the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust of San Mateo County, the County of San Mateo, local school districts, and incorporated cities, cities, and townships can go ahead and build housing. And so I think we just be very explicit who we're talking about. And then, I think that, oh, and then finally, what this doesn't have, and when I looked at other jurisdictions, when I looked at, so I read the Davis case, the California Supreme Court case. And when I looked at it, what I saw is that in most jurisdictions, they had a very specific number, or in the, or in South San Francisco, they had a sunset clause for a number of years. And the reason why I think that makes sense is because Article 34 puts a requirement for voter approval. Well, those voters are gonna change over a certain amount of time. So, the question is, did you get the voter approval or not? And so I would put a sunset clause of eight years on it at the end, so that you're authorizing this up to eight years. And then it would be up to us to come back and pass another, pass another measure if possible. But all of those are things that I want to put on the table for discussion with my colleagues. And then I think it's, I think we actually have time to go and ask the cities their opinion. Their opinion might not be dispositive, but at least we'll have it on the 7th when we go ahead and make that vote. And with that, Supervisor Slocum, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm just curious, is there any downside legally or otherwise to waiting until the 7th to hear this again?
I can't speak to anything legally. I do believe the, we haven't, if we had a meeting on the 7th and the board took action on the 7th, that would be within the timelines for 88 days. Whether there are other reasons, I'd have to defer to others.
I won't be here, but that's, I mean, I'll be remote. I certainly can tune in remotely, but that shouldn't be dispositive of the issue one way or another. I'm not necessary for this.
We always have, Eliana.
That's true.
There we go. Did you want to?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that I think the language around the taxes piece, like, I understand the concern, but I think that, you know, I think voters are savvy enough to know that, like, let's look, let's talk about the November ballot, right? There will be other measures that actually do increase taxes, and those measures are explicit about, you know, the numbers and the percentages on that piece. I think if we put in, if we change that language, it gets actually more confusing for people. I'm not against, like, playing it out a little bit more. I'm not done, hold on a second. And then the other thing was, I think the percentage is important because a solid, a concrete number can change over time. We might need more, we might need less based on arena numbers, based on, you know, other factors. And 1% kind of keeps it in context in terms of, you know, it's not gonna be, like, the average resident in our community does not know how many housing units exist in our county. And so a big number in the thousands can be, could likely be really confusing and off-putting. So, I would say, those are kind of my thoughts on those points, but I'm interested to hear what other folks have to say, and I'm here for the discussion, honestly, so, thank you.
All right. I think, I don't think, number one, that we should be fiddling with ballot language at this meeting. I think if we're gonna change it, we should do it in some other forum so that there's time to go through line by line and make certain that we're capturing everything that people want. And I think we should come back on the 7th or whenever it is that week. And in the meantime, we should check in with all the cities. We can make those changes about the PUC, et cetera, et cetera, right now. But I just think, my sense is that we need some time here to hash out some of this. And I'm not sure why it was brought today. We do have time, so why not do it and reach out to the cities? Even though the Hart board has 11 cities, I just think it's good government to communicate. As we heard Mr. Powell say this morning, listen and talk about these issues. That's how you get to an equitable solution. That's what he said, basically. So, that's sort of my opinion. I'm really motivated by voting, casting my vote when it's appropriate for the 11,400 people that are on waiting lists, for all the seniors that are running out of cash, for the veterans that don't have a place, for the people in North Fair Oaks that are living three and four families in a little small apartment and pain in arm and a leg. And, you know, I think it has potentially unintended consequences of freeing up some parking in North Fair Oaks and some other positive things, which I'm supportive of, obviously. But I think we're trying to, I think we, no disrespect meant, but I think we can wait, hash some of this stuff out, communicate to the cities, and then, you know, go back through it on the 7th.
Mr. President, you know, I just, I think, first of all, Supervisor Mueller, let me commend you for your approach and reason. I think you've laid out clearly the four points that need to be explored. I am interested in item one that you had mentioned about the 1% and really potentially lead to... looking at exploring that according to 2,900 housing units and looking, looking on the ballot. I think the clarification on the taxes is also important. Think the clarification, and I think this is really important, on the entities is, you know, especially around PUC being the largest landowner, I agree with you on that as well. We have a small disagreement, but it's, you know, eight years? I was looking at five years, but I think having a sunset is important. I do think, and I agree with the president as well, that we have time for this. We really need to talk and engage with the city council members, school districts, city managers in a conversation. And whether that's through a letter, if they choose to write to us, or if it's a resolution or board action, I want to understand where each city is. And with all due respect to Ann Snyder, all cities aren't the same, right? So there are different cities who have different opinions on this. But your approach today, and the board's approach of us moving forward in a judicious manner to include our councils and city, and school boards, and remember, at the end of the day, direct representation is key. These cities are accountable to their residents and their constituencies. And to understand where we are directly, I'm not the mayor of Daly City. I was at one time, but I'm not. And so a lot of the city's jobs are dealing with land use issues. It's probably the most contentious thing. So I think really getting their input is really going to help us in how we move forward. And so I'm in support of continuing this item till August 7th. Thank you.
Public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have seven speakers from chambers, and then we'll take speakers from Zoom. Armando Sanchez, followed by Stefan Rinaldi.
Thank you, President and Supervisors. My name is Armando Sanchez, as Suki stated, and I'm the Executive Director of Hart. I had some prepared remarks, but after hearing the conversation, I think I'm going to go off the cuff, so excuse me a little bit. First of all, I want to say that this is before you, largely at my behest and my organization's behest. I spoke to the leadership of the county, both at the supervisor level and at the staff level, and my approach was initially for Hart, but you guys, being the leaders of so many things you've done to promote housing, decided to expand it and make it more inclusive to give this opportunity to others beyond Hart. And that is why it came to you fast. Our board has authorized Hart to acquire buildings to preserve existing affordable housing. We have strong support from all our city members to take that action. But Article 34 is a thorn on our sides. It really complicates our ability. Everybody talks about the importance of preservation and nobody's doing anything about it. And the reason is, is because it is too expensive for nonprofits to do it. Right now, and I only have a minute, I'll be glad to answer some more questions if you'd like afterward. Right now, applications for new construction to our fund are coming in at $1.2 million to construct a one-bedroom unit or a two-bedroom, but essentially $1.2 million. We are in contract to acquire a building right now and preserve it at $350,000. We'll put an extra $50,000 per unit and preserve that at 400 per unit. That is a ridiculously small sum compared to new construction. So we have come to you to ask you to put such a measure on the ballot to help us keep people housed. It is more expensive to create new housing than it is to buy some of these buildings and keep people in their existing homes. That is what this is about. And that is why, you know, this whole thing happened way too fast for my liking either. We were banking on the state initiative. It was pulled, from my understanding, because nobody would step up and provide the money to, without putting money into it, it was going to fail. And that is the reason why it was pulled. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but thank you.
Thank you. Stefan Rinaldi, followed by Ken Smith.
Board of Supervisors, County Executive Calagie, and residents of San Mateo County, like to thank you today for meeting and discussion what's going on with Article 34. And I want to point to the Daily Journal today. And in it, there's two articles that were very interesting. The first article talks about Millbrae building 278-unit, six-story development and how it's moving ahead and it'll have affordable housing. And then the second is a letter to the editor in regards to a special election we have going on in Millbrae right now. And the reason why I bring it up to you is to tell you, Millbrae has been all about building affordable housing and doing their part. Housing Community and Development granted us our housing element earlier this year. We've also gone out of our way to put our own money to build for veterans. And the flip side of this is there's a right way and a wrong way to do process. In doing things at the very last minute, notifying the public on a Friday evening and then rushing to a special session on a Monday is the wrong way to do it. And we've already lived that. We've seen the Article 34 lawsuit that Millbrae is going through right now with the county. And Judge Feinman never touched on Article 34. So my point to you is painting with broad strokes by giving County Executive Calagie a carte blanche pass for Article 34 for all projects makes zero sense. These projects are all not the same. Millbrae was open to a Home Key project, but they want to do it at the right location. They don't want to do it less than 50 yards from a K through five elementary school playground, two blocks from a high school, and two blocks from a preschool. Last thing I'll leave you with is the Encampment Relocation Fund Round Three application, which the Assistant County Executive submitted back in January. In it, they list La Quinta as a 75-unit permanent supportive housing facility. And they say sobriety is not an entry for residency there and that drug use will be allowed. I have to ask, where's everyone's? Please reconsider this and do not paint with broad strokes. This is a city matter and take each case, issue by issue, as it evolves. Don't do broad strokes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken Smith, followed by Laura Smith.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Ken Smith. I'm a Millbrae long-term resident. My family came during the gold rush in the 49ers. And so I love the state of California. I love the, our county. And so I have a little history, right? I expect, you know, Article 34, if it's a good, if it's a good initiative or a bad initiative, if it's great, then people are going to vote yes on it, right? And that's just the way it goes. And so trying to take away our voting rights to say yay or nay on something, if you have a great plan, we're all going to vote yes on it. If it's a plan that doesn't meet our needs, or is it not a great plan, or there's a lot of problems with it, we're going to vote no. So put a great plan in front of us. That's really what it comes down to. You know, for La Quinta, and of course, for me being in Millbrae, there's been a lot of issues about La Quinta, you know, and, well, the housing-first methodology in Home Key, you know, there's the drug addicts, and I'm going to hate to be so blunt, but they are the most in need. You know, they've been, maybe they've been unemployed for two or three years, they have some big addiction problems, they're the ones that are going to get that, they will, or should I say, they should, they would be more qualified for that home, housing-first initiative. So, and then we did a Public Records Act on some of the current Home Key projects that were converted from hotels to Home Key. And the 911 calls went from like five to 30 annually to over 700 911 calls. That's going to affect our city's budgets, that's going to affect the response time for our citizens and our residents. And I remember when Mike was saying in our town hall meeting that these conversions had no effect on our 911 response. So I had more to say, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Laura Smith, followed by Jenny Michelle.
Good afternoon to my fellow citizens. I'm Laura Smith, longtime resident of Millbrae. I want to compliment the County of San Mateo for digging out that old copy of the California Constitution and taking a look at Article 34. Seems like they didn't have a copy for a while and managed to build quite a bit of affordable housing without any Article 34 votes. I'm going to refer to Shores Landing, the Navigation Center, the Coast House, Eucalyptus Grove in Burlingame. There's been a number of projects that have been built without Article 34 votes. So the fact that, the idea that affordable housing can't be built without Article 34 votes is really wrong. Article 34 only applies to those projects that are more than 50% funded by the public money. So we're not against affordable housing in Millbrae. We're happy to have workforce housing. There's been some really great projects built. But what we resent is the fact that the county seems to be going to great lengths to take away our vote on La Quinta. We're given a constitutional right by the state. We're not given it by the county. And the county can't take it away by having other cities vote to take it away from us. It has to be repealed at a state level. You can't repeal Article 34 at a county level, which is essentially what this measure amounts to, is a repeal of Article 34 for various city projects. And we in Millbrae expect our La Quinta vote, and we think we'll prevail in the lawsuit should the county go forward. So I urge you to vote no on this measure. It's misguided. I think it's not the way to get affordable housing through. I think that really the public needs to be respected on the idea of really low-income housing for the homeless, and they should be a part of the process and not cut out of the process as you wish to do. So thank you very much for considering.
Thank you. Jenny Michelle, followed by Councilwoman Ann Schneider.
Dear Dais and staff, I'm Jenny Michelle, longtime D4 resident in Menlo Park, recovering homeless teacher. This is our son, Desmond. We support the ballot measure. I sat in the courtroom earlier this year when the attorney for Millbrae argued that there were safe, public safety concerns with Project Home Key, despite not having any actual evidence of such burdens or damages. The judge called this out as bizarre since typically suits are brought when there's evidence to back up claims. Make no mistake, our son and I are the type of people who would personally benefit from these developments that the state, by way of the county, are breaking ground on. We like to pick up trash, participate in disaster preparedness, and are disabled, both of us. We sing, dance, and ride transit. Further, as a commercial property manager who represents various business interests and addresses safety matters in the county, it was exhilarating to read, "County Executive Calagie say, quote, 'I think the economic vitality of the county is extremely important, and in order to maintain that, I affirmatively believe we need more affordable housing,' unquote." Your seeing and hearing us affirms that we are indeed valued and are the keys to vibrancy, not a burden, as Millbrae incorrectly presumes. Bottom line, it's too much for the voter to be homeless or housing insecure. Many of us are already there, are on that trajectory. Please help us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ann Schneider, followed by our last speaker from chambers, Thomas Weiss-Muller.
Thank you. Ann Snyder happens to be a councilwoman of Millbrae, but we're going to be discussing what's happening today at our council meeting tomorrow. It's already on the agenda. I do want to thank Supervisor Canepa and Supervisor Mueller for your comments on that. My original comments were going to be, this is yet another action by the county that lacks transparency. And as our congressman loves to say, this collaborative county that we are. Well, I can tell you in my nine, almost nine years now on city council, I do not think my city has ever been treated equitably or collaboratively. So I appreciate having more time for that. I was going to talk about finances. The problem that I have had with what the county has done and with this measure is it doesn't put into due diligence. I spent many years federally funded growing green-based businesses, and the first thing you do in any action is to look at all of the economic and social ramifications. That was never done. As an example, Millbrae has 1,300 hotel rooms. Burlingame has 3,498. South City has 3,268. 28% of Millbrae's general fund is hotel tax. Why do you think we're fighting for hotels? For South City, it's 8% of their general fund. For Burlingame, it's anywhere between 13% to 18%. When, and we're already giving up 219 hotel rooms to become 384 housing units. And if you didn't know, understate, we are the fastest-growing city in San Mateo County. We are the fifth-fastest-growing city in the Bay Area and the 10th-fastest-growing city for multifamily dwellings in there. Due diligence would find these numbers. Due diligence would do just what the speakers have said here. Every city is different. In Millbrae, two, our second highest budget source of funds is hotel tax. For Half Moon Bay, I believe it's number one. Half Moon Bay is now in a structural deficit because of the loss of two hotels. Right with cities in structural deficit, as far as I can tell, and I'm going through every city's budget book right now, I can't say that all of the budget. This, in closing, come and speak with us. It is not fair for me as an elected to come here and be given two minutes to talk about something that affects 10% of our general fund or 28%. If you were the county to suddenly say, we like all your hotels. And I would finally close in this a bit snarky. The county has 773 hotel rooms. I haven't seen you take any of those. 351 of those hotel rooms are the grand Hyatt at SFO, $400 a room. I will believe in the county. I will have trust in the county when you take that hotel for Project Home Key.
Thank you. Our last speaker from chambers is Thomas Weiss-Muller.
President Slocum, members of the board, County Council, Niblin, and County Executives, Calagie and Rodriguez. I'm opposed to putting this on the ballot. It takes the voters out of the process. This is another example of the government saying, we're the smartest people in the room and the voters are too dumb. Be careful what you ask for. EMC Research did the polling for the $20 billion Bay Area housing bond that will be on the November ballot. They reported that the voter pessimism is high. 61% of the believe we're on the wrong track. Too many voters do not trust government. For example, we've thrown the word affordable around a lot today. Tell it what it is. It's subsidized. I'm sure you're going to give well-organized opposition if you put it on the ballot. President Slocum, you and I are both veterans, as well as County Attorney Niblin. And thank you for your service. Military doctrine calls for a three-to-one superiority to make a frontal attack. It's not there on this. I encourage the board not to put this on the ballot. One other thing concerning the, that you may not be aware of with this $20 billion Bay Area housing bond, if it passes, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Association of Bay Area Governments will have the same authority to skirt Article 34 without city or county approval. Again, I encourage you to not put this on the ballot and not to encourage, not to endorse regional measure four. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. President, at this time, we do have 16 hands raised. Would you like to leave it at two minutes?
Yes.
Okay. We'll start with Martin Fox, followed by James Coleman. Martin, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon, my fellow attorneys, President Slocum, and County Attorney Niblin, and Supervisor Canepa, Supervisor Crozal, and Supervisor Mueller. Thank you for your service to the county. Please reject this item as its claim to potentially benefit veterans appears to be not just erroneous, but as written exposes veterans to more institutionalized adverse housing discrimination. I agree with the ruling made by the United States District Court for the Southern District of California's 4,000-member veteran housing discrimination class action case entitled Powers versus McDonough by Judge David O. Carter last week. By the way, Judge Carter is a former United States Marine Corps First Lieutenant who was awarded a Bronze Star and Purple Heart as a result of serving in the Vietnam War. I rarely agree with jarheads like Judge Carter. However, I agree with his decision finding the 4,000-member class of veterans suing the VA and the city of Los Angeles suffered institutionalized housing discrimination when seeking housing located on property in West Los Angeles that the federal government had entrusted to the VA and the city of Los Angeles since 18...
that the federal government had entrusted to the VA and the city of Los Angeles since 1888. The proposed resolution before you would enable the use of rental policies that identify veterans as one of a group of, quote, "low-income persons" without regard to the promised housing's potentially discriminatory rental policies against veterans. Please reject this item, as its claim to potentially benefit veterans appears to be not just erroneous, but as written exposes veterans to institutionalized adverse housing discrimination again. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. James Coleman, followed by Dan Stejink. James, please unmute and begin.
Hello. Thank you so much. My name is James Coleman. I currently serve on the Hart Board and also as mayor for the city of San Francisco, although I am commenting on my own behalf. I want to tell you a little bit more about the history of Article 34. It was a segregationist era stain on the California Constitution passed very narrowly in 1950. It appealed to racist fears about integrating neighborhoods and was meant pretty explicitly to keep affordable housing and communities of color from being located within certain neighborhoods, and it has stymied affordable housing construction ever since. Measure AA in San Francisco was placed on the ballot unanimously by our city council in 2022, and it passed easily by a margin of 20 points with minimal campaigning. It has passed Sacramento County by a margin of 20 points. San Francisco by 47 points is a very, very popular measure once you give voters a choice of voting on it. This allows us to acquire existing affordable homes, endanger and converting into market rate, and keep those homes permanently affordable. We can acquire existing market rate homes, convert them into affordable housing. We can engage in land banking, acquiring underutilized properties for future redevelopment, and allows us to function as a public developer and have an actual direct role in producing the affordable housing that we need. This is another tool in the tool belt. This is a local control measure. Right now, our cities have our hands tied by the state, and we have a lack of local control because of Article 34. Here is the beauty of an Article 34 authorization. If cities do not want to take advantage of authorization, then they don't have to. This is not a requirement for cities to embark on creating their own housing, but it will be advantageous for every single city. In San Mateo County, it is a gift on the silver platter for all of us to have that option. And, you know, one thing that we learned is it saves attorney time. Built into, well, Article 34, of course, bans it, but our state legislature has passed a series exemptions. But right now, with an authorization, it would save attorney time. So please treat the housing crisis like it is and put this measure on the ballot for the betterment of the entirety of San Mateo County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, James. Dan Stejink, followed by Richard Gaya. Dan, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. There is no legal precedent for permanently overriding a state constitutional voting right. 1972, Prop 11, right to privacy. 1911, Prop 8, right to vote to recall your governor's state and local electeds. 1911, Prop 4, right of women to vote. 1950, Prop 10, which was Article 34, was a Dem-sponsored bill that cited cities' revenue, essentially the right to vote on subsidized housing projects. The parallels provided by county attorneys, who I respect quite much, are completely irrelevant. 1998, Santa Clara County ballot measure passed a vote for $950 million, 4,800 new units, and done. 2022's measure, and in Sacramento County, was expanded the type of projects hotel tax revenue could be spent on. Again, there is no legal precedent for permanently overriding a state constitutional vote. This issue, Article 34, will be voted on in November by voters as part of the $20 billion Bafa housing bond that Millbrae's own Commissioner Gina Pappin voted for two weeks ago. At 1% load, that's 2,800 or 2,900 new units per year. That's doubling the size of San Mateo County with affordable housing alone in the next 72 years. How can there not be a monetary effect for that? Again, there is no legal precedent for permanently overriding a state constitutional right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. 16 hands, Richard Gaya, followed by Ken Chan. Richard, please unmute and begin.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. I'm Richard Gallo. I am with Residents United Network, known as RUN. I am part of the Bay Area RUN Group, and we are residents who live in affordable housing and support affordable housing in our communities throughout the state. We are in a housing crisis, and part of the reason why we are in a housing crisis is because of the lack of affordable housing, particularly for the low and very low-income population. I admire the executive county gentleman for putting this proposal, because it also will help with retention with employees at the county level. It costs too much money for the county to constantly rehire position in trying to fill in position with the various county. The only thing that I see that's missing is we need to include universal design features to increase accessible housing for seniors, people with disabilities, families that have a child with a disability, and individuals with intellectual disabilities that have support living services from the regional center to maintain living in their communities in San Mateo County, to be close to the workplace, school, and places where they volunteer. So it's critical that we put this on the ballot and let the residents of San Mateo County to vote this, on this matter. Cities don't have to participate. Some of the cities are with prejudice, with discrimination, to not want affordable housing in their communities. That's why housing community developers are going after cities for choosing not to build affordable housing in their communities. We are in a crisis. We've been in a crisis. This is why we have a house community crisis in our communities. They are considered your residents, that they're living within your city or county limits. Support this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Ken Chan from Housing Leadership Council, followed by Frank Noto. Ken, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon, members of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm the senior organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality, affordable homes. I'd first like to extend our appreciation to staff for all their hard work on their report that has brought us together for today's discussion. On behalf of HLC, I'd like to encourage you to place the measure on the November 2024 ballot that will authorize your public agencies to annually develop, construct, or acquire homes for your low-income community members. I'd like to emphasize that it's possible to create a San Mateo County where we value everyone's humanity, where we treat everyone with dignity, and where anyone who's either from here or wants to be here can belong, where your children can stay in the communities they were raised in, and workers can afford to live in the cities where they work, and where we can care for our aging parents, and nobody has to choose between paying rent and buying food. But this won't happen without your support. Building and preserving deeply affordable homes in your communities is a complex issue, but solutions do exist. This ballot measure can be a part of that answer, which is why we urge you to place it on the November 2024 ballot. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ken. Frank Noto, followed by Gee. Frank, please unmute and begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. My name is Frank Noto. I want to make clear today that I'm speaking on my own behalf. I support putting this on the ballot. It's critical to build affordable housing all over the Bay Area. I am also president of Stop Crime Action. We have 5,000 members in the Bay Area. We're an anti-crime group. I'm a veteran, and I'm a member of Vets. And I worked very, very hard over a period of years to support creation of AD units of affordable housing for veterans at the Millbrae BART station. I think the argument that we're taking away voting rights is a false argument. Even to build five units under the current Article 34 would require a special election. That could be tens of thousands of dollars, more in some localities. It's senseless. It delays housing by months. It complicates financing. Overall, again, just for five units, it might cost more than $10,000 to do that. And, you know, delaying costs money, too. Consider the environment also. Workers have to commute daily, so sometimes more than an hour back and forth just to get to their jobs. So this, by creating more affordable housing, we can reduce the impact on the environment. As for crime, poverty is certainly a contributor to crime, so this is a way to get around that. I urge you to allow the electorate to vote on this measure and reject the racist Article 34. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gee, followed by Nathan Chan. Gee, please unmute and begin.
Hello. My name is Grace Schwab, and I actually live in Burlingame, and I own property in Millbrae. So this issue, I've been following for a while. I would just like to clarify that Millbrae residents discovered that 911 calls to Project Home Key locations increased at least by 400%. That's not a small number. Second, I'd like to talk about Mr. Slocum. I will not call him president or supervisor, because he hasn't earned that. He claims that good governance is communication. However, Mr. Slocum has multiple times on social media, in op-eds, and at meetings, claimed that the La Quinta project in Millbrae would be housing for the elderly and the homeless. Excuse me, elderly and families. And in his op-ed, he actually stated that Millbrae stands united against hate except for families and seniors. This was a disgusting statement, because Judge Feynman found, and a county attorney stated, that the case was not ripe, because the county had not identified the type of residency that would be included. So to pull at people's heartstrings claiming that we're housing families, elderly, and disabled is a complete lie. You need to include in this ballot measure, if it goes forward, that disabled includes drug addicts. Drug addicts that will not be required to be clean and sober. Drug addicts that can do drugs in their room and are not required to stay clean next to schools and with other residents where there are families and children next door. His behavior is despicable, and he should be held accountable for his unethical behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. 12 speakers, Nathan Chan, followed by Michael Brownrick. Nathan, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon, San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. As a non-professional advocate for affordable housing in San Mateo County, I was definitely disappointed that we were not, we were denied the opportunity to have a statewide vote on Article 34. But I am excited about this opportunity that the board might be giving all the voters of San Mateo County to weigh in on. I think, you know, our entire county faces an affordable housing challenge, so I think the ambition of the ballot measure before you today, where that extends to every jurisdiction and across the whole county, is appropriate. I think the last thing we need is a balkanized approach of Article 34 ballot measures, city by city, jurisdiction by jurisdiction. As a resident of Millbrae and a voter in Millbrae, I am excited to have the opportunity to potentially vote twice on this question. And while I'm hopeful that a majority of the voters of Millbrae can be persuaded to vote yes on both potential ballot measures, I do think that there's a non-negligible chance that the two ballot measures will arrive at opposite results. And I think I, as a voter, want to have a clear understanding of how those measures could potentially interact. I would not want to see if people in my city voting no on the city measure only to see potentially something, you know, without, I would like them to know what it means for the city to vote no on their ballot measure if the county measure goes the other way. I think this is a legal question that needs to be resolved, and I'm hopeful that this could be discussed in some way before the election. Thanks.
Thank you, Nathan. 10 speakers, Michael Brownrick, followed by Seema Patel. Michael, please unmute and begin.
Hi, thanks, everybody. It's been a very good conversation. I'm grateful to the board for taking this up quickly. I am speaking today as the chair of heart, which has already been referenced as comprising about half of the cities of San Mateo County. But importantly, it also includes developers, realtors, members from faith-based organizations. It is a cross-section of both public and private interests, and we were unanimous in our vote to try to oppose Article 34. You really can't escape the origins of Article 34. The Fair Housing Act was passed in 1949. This amendment was passed in 1950 by the state of California. It did not say that voters should vote on condominiums. It did not say voters should vote on life science projects. It did not say voters should vote on new community centers. It said voters should vote only on affordable housing, and that was clearly aimed at keeping affordable housing and poverty out of communities. So I think you have to look at the origin. For us, it makes a big difference, because we do have this landmark program that our executive director, Armando Sanchez, told you about. So today, to build an affordable unit costs about $1 million. Our effort to buy buildings and preserve naturally affordable units within them will cost about $400,000 a unit. It's a tremendous advantage. Article 34, however, significantly complicates that and indeed puts the entire program in jeopardy. This is not a vote about La Quinta. I understand my neighbors and the issues that they have. This is a vote about amending Article 34 so that agencies like ours can do the job that we all want to do, which is to keep our communities open to our teachers, to our essential workers, to our kids, and to our blue collar and other neighbors and residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. 9 hands, Seema Patel, followed by Olga Perez. Seema, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to comment this afternoon. My name is Seema Patel. I currently serve as a planning commissioner for the city of San Mateo, but I'm speaking on my own behalf this afternoon. I wanted to comment in support of putting this measure on the ballot this November. The city of San Mateo conducts a community survey every two years, statistically significant and demographically representative, where we solicit our residents' input on a variety of issues. And consistently, affordable housing ranks as the top concern among residents of San Mateo. This measure, if passed, will allow public agencies, including local public agencies, to preserve and produce affordable housing to address this top concern of our residents. And will allow them to do so without having to step through costly bureaucratic hurdles like local special elections, which in San Mateo can cost $400,000 to $600,000. And of course, the cost of executing those elections is just going to be added on to cost of developing the housing, which makes it more expensive to produce. So to summarize, I support this ballot measure. I support asking voters to weigh in on it, because I think it will enable local agencies to address the top concern of our region in a more quick and streamlined manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Seema. 9 hands, Olga Perez, followed by Amanda Chang. Pardon me. Olga, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon. This is Olga Perez. I'm speaking on behalf of my family and community of Old Town in San Francisco, and sincerely hope that everyone had time to read my letter on Friday. Our Spanish-speaking immigrant community continues to be marginalized and has never had a proper outreach for a fair voice at the equity table that should exist within our own city and county. We are a silent community that continues to be silenced by these inequities. Aside from this, there are many disparities and prejudices that exist, which includes housing. However, housing is not just about providing a roof or constructing a building. I myself know too well what it's like to live on limited income and face housing insecurities. Our concerns are not at all about denying housing to anyone. I personally do not wish to be part of this discriminatory law. What we in Old Town will always be opposed to is the lack of respect and dignity that we are being presented with on a daily basis. I wish to stress to our city, county, and all of our housing advocates to please take into consideration the impact and effect that decisions and hopping from town to town advocacy has on our communities, who are being taken advantage of from all angles. High-rise buildings in the middle of residential historical area, inches away, completely blocking our windows and taking away natural light, where county has placed sex offender and personal states and addictions without any regard to children whatsoever. Please think about homebound seniors and children already living in Old Town and our historical neighborhood when considering future development sites if and when this ballot measure passes, because this has not been a topic of care or conversation for us. if and when this ballot me- measure passes, because this has not been a topic of care conversation for us here in Old Town. We all know too well that three-ten Miller Avenue and high rises on Linden Avenue would no way make its way to west side residential areas or any other historical neighborhood or cities where there is respect and dignity for its residents. It is only unjustly imposed and permitted on us in Old Town because we are a predominantly disadvantaged, Spanish-speaking immigrant community where we simply do not matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Olga. Eight hands, Amanda Pura- excuse me, Amanda Chang, followed by Catherine Dumont. Amanda, please unmute and begin.
Uh, hello. Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Amanda Chang, and I'm a lifelong resident and voter in District One. Um, so I grew up in San Mateo County my whole life. I live in Burlingame. Uh, my parents bought a house there in the eighties and I've um, loved living here. It was a great place to grow up. Uh, but I, myself and many of my peers can't afford to live here anymore. Um, the rent for even a like, single room is uh, fifteen hundred or more. Um, it's just untenable for any of us. I started working at an organization called Urban Habitat after I graduated from law school because I wanted to be able to address um, displacement at a regional level. Um, we've been working on a number of issues, including the BAFA bond measure that was brought up earlier. Uh, but there are, in fact, so many historical wrongs that we need to right. Um, and as someone mentioned earlier, there's no precedent for this, but there's not a lot of precedent for a lot of good things in this world. Um, and that's what makes it so important that we take that stand and we make those changes that we see. If we see wrongs in the world, we have to do something to correct it. Um, we can't just wait for someone to do it first. We're making great steps um, in the county for affordable housing and for housing preservation. Um, as was mentioned earlier, preservation is much more cost-effective than production. We're not talking about building large high-rise apartments. We're talking about preserving current uh, affordable housing of smaller units as well. And that is what a lot of people want to see. We don't want to see like huge buildings in all of our areas, um, except for necessary, but I think when we talk about this specific instance, we're talking about putting it on the ballot. This is something that we're going to be asking the voters. We're not taking away voting rights. We're correcting a historical wrong and asking the people what they want to see moving forward in the future, um, including young voters like myself. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amanda. Catherine Dumont, followed by Kathleen Bailey. Catherine, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon, Catherine Dumont. I'm a D-four resident and a senior. I'm a second-generation California native, and I'm also a lifelong renter who has experienced displacement due to the high cost of housing. And I've been involved with affordable housing since um, twenty-twenty-one, after the second time I was displaced. Um, and I've come to understand that um, Article thirty-four is a huge impediment to affordable housing production because public money is needed for affordable housing projects. You can't simply, they just don't get built without it. Um, and I'm very concerned about uh, anything that feels like uh, a- an excuse for not putting this on the ballot. Um, I understand there's a lot of uh, of heat uh, around uh, concerns about what the cities are right or might not like about it. But um, the county in this case is not imposing its will. Um, it's simply putting this to the voters. And um, the uh, exclusionary um, uh, practices that have uh, uh, created this housing crisis by um, blocking affordable housing over the years. Uh, it needs to be addressed, and unfortunately, it's not going to be addressed at the state level this year. But um, we have an opportunity to um, to vote on it here in the county and and allow some small percentage of housing development uh, for affordable housing to uh, continue. Um, have a chance to be built, and we need to er- act soon because um, the crisis is only getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Six hands raised. We'll now go to Kathleen Daly, followed by Maria Romell. Kathleen, please unmute and begin. Kathleen Daly?
Hi, thank you, sorry. Um, thank you, President Slocum and supervisors for allowing me an opportunity to speak. Um, also want to thank Mr. Callahan for addressing this issue. I could not agree more with his presentation. He talked about the same group of people that I want to talk about today. And although I sit on the North Fair Oaks Community Council, I'm today speaking as a resident of North Fair Oaks, a former small business owner and an over thirty-year resident of San Mateo County. The definition of Article thirty-four in California says it's unconstitutional to build a publicly funded low-income rental housing project unless it has been approved by the voters of the community in which the project is located. I don't think there's anything more racist than that. To keep San Mateo County a place for everyone to live, we have an obligation to build low-income rental housing whenever and wherever possible. The building of more affordable housing is the only way that this county will continue to thrive. We have to build more affordable housing to keep a younger group of residents here. These are the residents that are typically low-income just based on wages. These are the people that work in our small businesses, our restaurants, coffee shops and stores, those who work in medical but are not doctors, who teach and work and maintain our schools. They're the therapists. They work in mental health. They cook, they clean, they build. We know that this list is endless. We also need housing for seniors, for our veterans and for our disabled community. We all know that the monthly rents for market-rate housing are not affordable, yet market rate keeps getting built. I would love, I for one would love to see that stop. Let's get this passed and also take a good look at small-site housing to address the issues even faster. This all needs to happen sooner than later. I know that you all understand the issue and are challenged by the huge problem in San Mateo County. Please adopt this resolution and get this on the ballot. I'm hopeful that the voters will turn out and we will get it passed. To end, let's all remember the example that the Millbrae the county listened. It was changed to accommodate families and seniors. The fear tactics for those residents um, and and how they're acting are senseless and baseless. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Mr. President, at this time, we have six hands raised. Would you like me to make a final call for public comment?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Great. Members of the public, at this time, if you'd like to make a comment for item two, please raise your hand, and I will announce the final name that we'll take for comments. After I do announce this final name and hands do go up, I will lower them as that final name I call will be the last name that we take. So please raise your hand at this time for item two. Okay, final call has been made, and we are still at the six hands, so the last name that we will take is Elsa Schaefer. The final names that we will take are as follows. Maria Romell, Jordan Grimes, Kalima Salahuddin, Gia from Housing Choices, Jess Hudson, and our last speaker, Elsa Schaefer. Maria Romell, please unmute and begin.
Hello, my name is Maria Romell. I am the administrative project coordinator at Habitat for Humanity Greater San Francisco. Thank you for your time today. Habitat for Humanity Greater San Francisco builds homes and sustains affordable homeownership opportunities for families in Marin, San Francisco and San Mateo Counties. Our value is focused on building partnerships, equity, stability and legacy. We are in a housing crisis, and we appreciate all efforts to reduce the significant barriers to creating affordable housing. What I ask you to consider today is to include home preservation and homeownership opportunities in all affordable housing conversations and measures. Habitat Greater San Francisco only creates homeownership opportunities, does not have any rental properties. We preserve homes for existing low-income homeowners, and our new builds are sold to first-time homebuyers. Affordable rental is certainly important, uh, but it is homeownership that creates equity, stability and legacy for people and families in San Mateo County. Often, homeownership developments like ours at Habitat Greater San Francisco are shut out of funding and development opportunities. Please remember that home preservation and homeownership are crucial pieces to solving the affordable housing crisis. Thank you again, uh, everyone for your hard work and effort today. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Maria. Jordan Grimes, please unmute and begin.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a lifelong San Mateo resident and lead member of Grassroots Housing Advocacy Group Peninsula for Everyone. We're in strong support of this resolution and ballot measure and are deeply appreciative of both this board and county executive ca- uh, county executive Callahan for your unwavering commitment to addressing our housing and homelessness crisis. The history of Article thirty-four, as others have touched on, is exceptionally ugly. It was designed quite literally to keep low-income people and people of color out of high-resourced communities like ours. And it has unfortunately, uh, sadly been very successful in that regard. It has been extremely disappointing and frankly embarrassing to see some in this county who purport to be community leaders defending and in some cases championing this backward racist relic of a bygone era. Accordingly, the rest of us have a duty to stand up and say so, to stand up and say that this is not who we are, that this shameful history is just that, left in our past. To recognize that affordable housing is a critical need in our community and that San Mateo County is for everyone. Contrary to erroneous claims by some heard earlier, allowing county residents to vote on this is the most equitable and democratic and democratic way to address it. It allows the entire county to have a voice on the most critical issue we face today. It is proper, it is timely, and it is necessary. And if passed, we'll make it possible to create and build the affordable housing we need efficiently and sustainably. I urge you to approve the measure either today or on the seventh, and I look forward to both campaigning for it and voting for it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jordan. Kalima Salahuddin, please unmute and begin.
Hello, my name is Kalima Salahuddin. Um, I am a member of the Reach Coalition and also a board member um, for the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. Um, good afternoon, President Slocum and um, the rest of the Board of Supervisors and County Executive Mike Callahan. I want to thank you all for your work here and just echo the sentiments that you've heard before. And I will say that I hope this election allows us to um, if placed on a ballot, can s- continue the conversation around affordable housing and unhoused. And we tote anti-hate in this policy that we're anti-hate, but the rhetoric that's used against those are unhoused, if replaced with another words, is hate speech. And so I, I really want to have conversation about the fear around um, those that would be placed in affordable housing or that needed affordable housing and what we could do to mitigate that fear so that we can be the county that, you know, I want to continue to be a citizen in, have my children be able to afford to live here and um, be proud of. So I, I hope this is placed on a ballot. I hope this uh, being placed on a ballot allows us to have these uh, uncomfortable conversations that need to be had, and I hope that we can learn from the history of this, of this uh, um, how this was placed in the Constitution, see how it's being used now and the connection, and break the cycle. Um, true systemic change uh, so that we are the county and can truly be the county that I'm proud to live in. So thank you.
Thank you, Kalima. Gia from Housing Choices, please unmute and begin.
Hello, honorable Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your time. I am speaking on behalf of Housing Choices, a nonprofit dedicated to assisting individuals with developmental disabilities in securing and maintaining housing, therefore avoiding institutionalization and fostering like, an independent living situation. I strongly support placing the measure on the November ballot. This measure is crucial for addressing the shortage of suitable housing for this population. It explicitly mentions that the housing will cater to various groups, including people with disabilities, ensuring that this population is not overlooked or becomes homeless. By allowing for this development of up to one percent of the total housing units annually with any unused units carrying over to the next years, this measure provides a sustainable and scalable approach to increasing affordable housing over time. It's a huge solution to reaching functional zero. Consolidating this measure with the November election will also maximize voter turnout and community support, leading to a more robust mandate for affordable housing initiatives. I strongly urge you to support this resolution to create more opportunities for safe and affordable housing for our most vulnerable residents and give opportunity for them to raise their voice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gia. Jess Hudson, please unmute and begin.
Hello, my name is Jess Hudson, and I am a twelve-year Millbrae resident. I have raised my kids here since they were five and one years old. My first kid started at Spring Valley two weeks before, we got here two weeks before they started kindergarten. All their memories are here. I served on the Spring Valley PTA. I serve on city and county commissions because I really value serving the community that I live in and making it better for the kids that live here. My seventeen-year-old wants to be a literature teacher and wants to come back and teach in San Mateo County. My son Emerson wants to do video games. He's going to be in tech, and he wants to live in San Mateo County. And to do that, I have to pay sixty percent of my income and rent to keep them in this county. I'm a low-income, single mother, and I'm a DV survivor, and I fight to keep my family here. And we serve our community that we love, and so I beg each of you to adopt this resolution, to give me a voice on the ballot in November. We must pass a bulk authorization and prioritize housing for the many working families like mine who desperately want to stay in this county but don't have access to the housing and supports that we need to do that. I commend the board and the county super- and the county executive for all of their work on this issue, and I plead with you, let's pass this resolution and make sure that the people who live here stay here, that there's a space for all of us, that there's a home for us in San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. And now our last speaker, Elsa Schaefer. Please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I'm Elsa Schaefer. My family and I have lived in San Mateo County for, in two weeks, it'll be forty years. I too was once um, the PTA president of Fox School, our elementary school. And I just have to say, one of the, one of the things I had to do was fill out a form at one point in the year. Uh, just describing your school and describing its setting. And one of the things that it asked was, how racially diverse is it? And I was stunned. I had to stop and think. I had never even thought about diversity because our school was so diverse. And I remember talking with my son about it a little while ago. And when we go back east and see my, my brother and sister and their families, it is so not diverse, and Ravi always can't wait to come back here. Same with my daughter Asha. They do not like going east anymore. I want to live in, and they very much do want to live in, a community that that want, that wants to welcome all people. And I've been doing um, some interesting canvassing in Millbrae right now um, about the recall measure and have been quite amazed at how easily people can throw out the world, the word homeless to mean dangerous. Oh, no, but that, that La Quinta Hotel will, will be next to the schools, and you don't want those people near the children. It's just mind-blowing to me. I then read the literature that was also being put on doorsteps uh, and uh, uh, in favor of this recall election. It is mind-blowingly inaccurate, racist, narrow-minded, and not a part of the community I and my family are so proud to be part of. So I'm so grateful that you are taking up this issue. I very much hope it does get on the ballot in November, and we will all be voting for it. Thank you. Thank you, dear board.
Thank you, Elsa. Mr. President, that concludes public comment.
Very good. Thank you to all the speakers. We appreciate your input. Um, concluding thoughts, Supervisor Mueller? You want to start?
Uh, I appreciate uh, all the public comment today. I, I am where I was in terms of uh, moving this to the seventh. I'm not sure how um, I'm, I'm happy to work with county council to sort, to put together a draft for, of what I would propose, and perhaps others want to do the same, and then we just put them in front, or I'm not sure how President Slocum, you were envisioning us getting language together, but um.
Mr. President, I might propose, I actually had the opportunity prior to the meeting to uh, speak with Supervisor Mueller briefly, and I, I think I have a general sense of language-wise where he'd like to go, but it might be helpful to maybe have a a supervisor or two, maybe designated even to uh, uh, to collaborate on language if, if in fact, there's additional beyond what we've talked about here today uh, that might be percolating.
Thank you. Just a que- just a question.
We're not going in order?
Oh, no, I just wanted, it's about this item. I'm sorry, Supervisor Corzo. Um, just for clarity.
Um, just for clarification, you, you could work through each of the supervisors, right, on their i- ideas? You're not precluded from, from doing that in terms of the, the drafting of the um, of the resolution, correct?
Uh, under the Brown Act, I, you know, I could speak to any one of you individually as long as I'm not sort of cross-pollinating. Um, so I'm, I'm certainly happy to deal with it any way you all care to deal with it.
Yeah, I would just suggest, I think it's a great idea. Um, I think what I would suggest is just, you know, incorporating on a one-on-one basis what, you know, ideas that each member has and then trying to see if that, that fits.
Can I just switch my, my thought and I apologize, but the only other question I had too is, I don't know if anyone else on the board is interested in any limited polling on the issue or not.
Supervisor Mueller, I just don't think in a short period of time that we'd be able to get an RFP together to get out and uh, and conduct polling in any meaningful way in this short period. It's just a.
Would it require an RFP?
Depending on the cost of it, I mean typically it does because of the, the costs that, at least in other ballot measures that we've gone through, uh, it would, uh, does require an RFP.
All right, I understand. I guess we're just, I guess we are somewhat uh, time constrained. Uh, my final comment is just, I do appreciate the meaning that it was brought uh, because it actually has given us time to create a runway before the seventh to sort of do the things we need to do uh, to get ready for a board decision. So thank you for bringing it today. Uh, it was moving to hear uh, to the, all of the various uh, people who called in to go ahead and share their thoughts and feelings about it. And uh, I'm looking forward to trying to fashion a way forward with my colleagues. Thank you.
Yep, when you make your motion, uh, Supervisor Mueller, would you make it the date the sixth instead of the seventh so that we have a little more wiggle room and runway in case something turns up?
Happy to do it. I don't need to make the motion, so either.
Okay, I'm sorry. Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you, yes. Um, I, I think it's a good idea to kind of, for us to designate, designate two supervisors and I'd be interested in being the other supervisor to work on that. That way, because if we just continue to all like, if we don't do that, then my concern would be that we're not moving towards uh, a more like united front and like compromise on, on specific language.
You're appointed.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
One thing is, I think is imperative to go back to the cities and to find out and ascertain their views on this matter. So how, how would we go about doing that?
Um, well, I'll start with the, I'll start with the city managers. I do believe we have time to do that uh, within the next couple of weeks. So start with the city managers and see if they can um, I, I mean, a lot of, a lot of councils will not have a meeting uh, between now and then, be, just because of the, the break. Uh, but to the extent possible, I'd love to have them individually work with their council members to try to come to some consensus uh, or, or at least get an idea how they feel. So um, I'll, I'll be working through that process.
So I'm going to make as part of my motion that we ask them for a letter. So if they don't want to give us one, fine, but I'd like the request to go out to all of the city agencies to, to, to provide us a letter of what their standing is on this. And that way at least we'll know that we'll have their input or they chose not to provide any.
That sounds good. Yeah, we can certainly do that.
You know, I, that's a, that's a great idea. I was actually just thinking about that. I think um, because of the, the recess, you know, I think there's two things that cities can do, right? We've called a special mission, but special meeting. Um, they have the authority to do such if they choose so. Um, and I think the second thing is, I'd really like to understand, not just from the um, the cities, but I'd like to understand um, from the various school districts. My understanding is um, special districts are included. Is that correct, John?
Uh, yes, it's true.
Are there any, any, any other um, districts outside of um, school districts, special districts uh, that we should include county council?
Uh, we had mentioned the, the Hart Special Vehicle, of course. Um, and I, and I did, as long as we're talking about the matter, I mean, state public body as we talked about or the, or the sort of local um, sort of the terminology we've used in our own um, measure. Uh, it does include state agencies. I know there was some concern expressed about state agencies and uh, I did just want to note that there are situations where state funding is received and where there, there could be arguments that it's the state that's involved and sometimes you're braiding, you know, funding from lots of different sources. So I'd, I'd really, recognizing that you all have expressed a concern about all that, I, I, I do want to leave open sort of the notion that we might come back with something that continues to incorporate state agencies and explain why it is that we think it's important to do that. Um, again, as we move quickly, I want to make sure that we don't embed any unintended um, problems, I, I guess. So, but, but, but yeah, to your, to your question, yes. You talked about school district, we talked about cities, uh, we've talked about the county itself. Um, perhaps different other counting uh, authorities that might technically be separate, like the County Housing Authority, um, of which you serve as the um, the, the body. Um, uh, we talked about the Hart Special Ve- Vehicle. Nothing else comes immediately to mind, but uh, um, but you know, that's, that's my answer to your question.
Great. And, and the most important thing um, I think to me and others is transparency. And I think transparency is, is critically important uh, to the process. So making sure that um, local governments are included. I'm going to ask the um, city manager and the county council and then um, if, if my colleagues agree um, that each of these entities are sent a letter um, to talk about what we discussed today and the direction of um, where their organization is. Because I'd like to hear from every one who is affected um, by uh, this measure. And I, I just think in terms of transparency and inclusion, these board members should sort of know what's going on because it does have an effect on them. And um, as we move forward, this inclusive, I, I, I like the word um, collaboration. This collaboration um, is going to be really critical, I think, in terms of how we, we move forward. I don't think we should leave anyone behind. Um, this came out on, on a Friday and I know we have um, you know, a timeline. I think us moving this to August sixth, not August seventh, is important. But I'd like every entity that is affected by this to, to make sure that we have the letter.
Yeah, we can certainly do that and we're happy to include that in the board record.
You want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll go ahead and move uh, I'll go ahead and, and move this item to August sixth. Um, in the interim time period, uh, county council is to work with Supervisor Corzo um, and uh, another uh, board member to be named later in a subcommittee uh, to put together draft language for a uh, for the measure. Um, and that a letter will be sent uh, to all of the cities uh, in San Mateo County and townships requesting a written response uh, whether that, uh, whether they oppose, support or have no opinion with respect to proposed board action. I think that covers it.
I'll second. Uh, could I, could I ask just a clarifying question? Because there was sort of an open issue and that was the, the question of uh, who would be serving with Supervisor Corzo in that matter? I, I don't think to be named later actually works very well in the context of.
I didn't know if people who, okay, I'll do, I'm happy to do it.
Perfect.
That's fine.
And, and then the use of the term cities and townships, I, I'm, I am taking that to mean just incorporated cities within the county. Um, sometimes we refer to them as towns.
I have, I have a number of, of those in my district that prefer to be called towns. So I'm trying to respect that in my motion.
Absolutely. I, I, we talk about the twenty, the twenty.
The twenty incorporated.
Twenty cities.
Yes.
Now Supervisor Canepa also wanted school districts and other entities included in that.
You know, let me, let me withdraw that. Why don't we just focus on the, the cities and towns? Um, I'm fine with that and I'll second the motion.
So just to clarify, the motion is to uh, move this item to uh, August sixth meeting. We'll determine the time. Um, and then sending a letter to the city, city and town managers for the response to see whether they um, they're in favor or opposing or there's no.
Right. And then a subcommittee of Supervisor Corzo and myself to work on the ballot language.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. And just one other uh, matter's been raised for me, uh, and that is whether or not it was, recognizing the sixth is the target date, I thought there might be some concern about maybe even the availability of some, some staff, maybe even a supervisor and uh, whether or not it would be appropriate to.
I will be out of the country, but I will appear, will be a technology for the meeting, so.
Okay, so Supervisor Mueller participating remotely, I, I, otherwise whether the sixth works, I guess, is a question. And whether there's a, we want to leave that uh, flexible, whether uh, maybe the fifth or a different date or the, or the seventh.
Mr. County Council, do we have to determine a, a set date?
No, I think you could just agree to continue it to a date to be determined by the board president and notice pursuant to special meeting, recognizing that there's been a um.
It's the sixth.
It's the sixth.
Okay. That's fine. Okay, I, you know what, just in case, I'll make it to a, to a date of the, of the week of August fourth in case something happens. Does that work for you Supervisor Slocum? No, okay, I'll make it the sixth. It's the sixth.
All right, it's the sixth and the second and my Supervisor Canepa, I'll take the roll call. Okay. Okay. All right, Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Canepa.
Yes.
And President Slocum.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Thank you. Are we?
We're not done.
No, we're not done. We got item three. Where are you going? Okay, so we're going to turn now to item number three, which is adopt a resolution authorizing the county executive or designee to negotiate and execute a lease agreement substantially in the form of, as provided in attachment A and as may be modified in consulting, in consultation with the county attorney to permit California Dining Services to provide cafeteria services at the Hall of Justice Office Building Three for the term July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four through July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-seven.
Uh, thank you, uh, President Slocum and members of the board. Um, so the county issued an RFP for cafeteria services at the Hall of Justice, uh, grab-and-go services at the COB-three on uh, April third. The vendor um, was selected from an evaluation team who actually did taste testing and uh.
Why weren't we?
Oh, no.
How come we weren't invited? Yeah.
Well, I, I can, I, I hear the food was very good. Actually, I actually did taste it. And uh, I would recommend their salmon, by the way. But um, so the uh, this, this comes to the board because we do hope to get that up and running and it is critical to jurors and uh, and people visiting uh, the county center to have um, food available here. So your action today after a vetting process will allow us to enter into a lease and a contract with um, with this company called California Dining Services, who really operate throughout the Bay Area and, and do a, a very good job uh, from our reference checks. Uh, and our hope is that within the first two weeks of Au- of August, we will uh, have the cafeteria up and running and then sometime uh, soon thereafter have food over at the COB-three, the grab-and-go over there. So I will submit uh, on that basis.
Thank you. Any questions for the county executives on this matter? There don't appear to be any questions.
I just have one question.
Oops.
When is our taste test? I'm just kidding. I, I move uh, to pass this resolution.
So do you want to do public comment?
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, no speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Public comment on Zoom now open for item three regarding a lease agreement for California Dining Services. No hands raised, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
I move to pass this resolution, item three.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I'll take the roll calls. Supervisor Pine?
Yes.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yep.
Supervisor Canepa?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now we are adjourned? We are officially adjourned. Quarter to four.
Yes, three forty-seven PM and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.